Meeting on October 4th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the Performing Arts Center. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please turn off or silence your cellphones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next is the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Anishinaabe people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Anishinaabe people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation in a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial and whose land on which the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next is roll call.
William Pengel.
Here.
Tim Oderkirk.
Here.
Sheila Murphy.
Here.
Jessica Jernigan.
Here.
Courtney Stegman.
Here.
Amy Bond.
Here.
Dana Caukens.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to change or add? Okay, thank you. Next is the citizens' request to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. First is Jessica Lapp.
Jessica Lapp from Union Township. My son is a senior at the high school. I wanted to thank you again for your concern for the health and safety of our children and our community. We continue to see both COVID cases and deaths across Michigan, so I appreciate the big-picture school board that you are in seeing students, faculty, and staff of Mount Pleasant Public Schools as part of the larger community, each impacting the others, each needing to respect and look out for the others. I don't always agree with each of you on any individual issue, but I respect the time and energy you put into your position and the leadership you provide to our community. Thank you.
Next is Maureen Eke.
I'm Maureen Eke and a professor at CMU and a resident of Mount Pleasant. Like Jessica, I want to commend you on the work that you're doing. Thank you again for being diligent in your work and for your patience. It's, you know, we are in trying times and, you know, understanding is necessary. And I applaud your willingness to really listen to other views. I do have a simple question, really, and it has to do with your protocol, the school's protocol for handling COVID cases, especially when you have incidents of COVID in the public schools. Recently, one of the middle schools, as you reported and as parents have reported, was closed because you had COVID cases. I've had a number of conversations with some parents, you know, whose kids go to the middle school. And one of the things they pointed out is that they did not receive much information or much help. They were told, yes, there, you know, there's an incident, we're closing down the school, and school will resume on Monday or pretty... And when they called for information, resources, about resources, about what to do next, they felt that their calls were ignored. What I want to point out or at least highlight is that in cases like this, people are traumatized. And this is what we've been trying to emphasize. COVID does not just simply affect the kids, but it also affects family members. And so now we have the children who are traumatized. We also have parents who are traumatized, who are seeking resources, begging for somebody to talk to them, to give them some sense of direction, and nothing is happening. Or at least, they say that they are not getting responses. So please, I would suggest that if we have not developed a clear protocol for addressing those cases or what to do with parents when such cases happen, it might be useful to do something like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Laura Gorle.
This is Laura Gorle. I live in Mount Pleasant, Michigan. And I realized last time that I was here, I was quite unskillful. I was showing this circle of courage that we've been introduced to as a trauma-informed school district from Project Aware and Star Commonwealth. And I'm so excited that we've embraced it in a full way at Pullen Elementary and using it as our North Star, as I'm using it as my own personal North Star. But I've been living here on Saginaw-Chippewa land for a long time now. Well, my whole life, since I'm coming on 60. And one of the things that I've learned is that the Native people are so generous, so willing to share stories and songs and dance and invitations to things. And always at the end, there's a giveaway, a lovely giveaway. And I have a giveaway tonight. This was the unskillful part. I came with the circle of courage, but I forgot to leave the circle of courage magnets that we're passing out at Pullen Elementary for kids to put on lockers and refrigerators at home. So I'm going to approach and give these to Linda here. And here's a giveaway for each of you in the manner of Indigenous generosity.
Thank you.
Good evening. At our last meeting, I believe Superintendent Burgliver said CRT is not a subject not taught at MPPS. So that prompted me to go online and I read, and I'm going to share the first couple paragraphs of our state superintendent, Michael Rice's, comments on Tuesday, October 10th, 2021, regarding CRT. Despite the concerns raised by some, in the state and country, critical race theory is not a curriculum issue in pre-K-12 education. Critical race theory is, in fact, an academic umbrella of reflections and writings developed in higher education, college, universities, law schools, and graduate schools since the mid-1970s. It is not a curriculum, and it is not a pre-K curriculum. It is an academic lens or set of lenses developed primarily by those in higher education to consider the elements and impacts of racism, and particularly institutional racism, on our country and citizenry. While there are certain teachers who have read about critical race theory to inform their thinking about the world in which they live and teach, critical race theory is not a curriculum in Michigan public schools whose local school districts are responsible for the creation of their own curricula. I just want to comment, he didn't talk at all about what CRT is, the details, but he did call it "an academic lens" or "set of lenses developed primarily blah, blah, blah." I could be teaching a course in history and teach that course through the lens of critical race theory. Found this online as I was reading. Participants at the NEA Teacher Quality Webinar will receive training on, quote, "dismantling the structures, policies, and implicit biases that prop up white privilege," and on, quote, "confronting white nationalism in the classroom." I also found this, "Sign up today for the latest round of NEA Social Justice Book Studies." Quote, "A new round of virtual book studies is now open for member sign-up. Brought to you by NEA's Center for Leadership and Learning. These five-week online group discussions center on two important books to help educators improve their skills as advocates for social and racial justice for our students and our society. The first book is White Fragility by Robin D'Angelo, and the second book is How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram X. Kendi."
You've had three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
I just have a question. I apologize. I've got all these papers here. I think it's, I don't think, I know the state superintendent saying, "The ball's in your court." And I want to know if, in fact, this divisive ideology and false narrative of our country is being taught in our classrooms in Mount Pleasant.
Thank you. Next, we move on to reports and updates.
Yep, good evening, everyone. The first item on our reports and updates is an update from the Mid-Michigan Aquatic Recreational Authority. And I'd like to introduce to you John Zhang. John is a representative of the Aquatic Recreational Authority. So, John, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, school board, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name's John Zhang. I'm the chairman of the Mid-Michigan Aquatic Recreational Authority. Lisa Diaz-Sizma, your appointed representative to the REC Authority, is unable to attend tonight. In a brief period of time, I'd like to tell you two things. First, tell you what has been happening with the REC Authority, and secondly, make a monetary request. The REC Authority has been meeting regularly by Zoom. We've elected officers, I being the chairman, and the school board's appointment to the REC Authority, Lisa Diaz-Sizma is the treasurer. Allison Giudini is the secretary. Other Authority Board members include Stan Shingles and Judy Wagley. We have also accepted the volunteer services, not a REC Authority Board member, but the services of Nolan Camu, a CMU student. We have adopted the Articles of Incorporation. We've had numerous discussions about our tasks and have created startup budget. We've talked about a website to keep the public informed of our progress and to solicit donations. We've talked about marketing materials to show the public why the Aquatic Authority, Aquatic Center benefits the community. As you're aware, our life, the life of the Aquatic Authority, has been limited by you and the other participating municipalities to three years. The REC Authority's task before those three years is up, is to get the issue on a ballot and let the voters decide if they want an Aquatic Center. The boundary lines for the Aquatic, for the REC Authority are the Mount Pleasant School District boundary lines. The REC Authority has prepared a budget and is asking for $10,000 from this board. The REC Authority will be asking the same amount from the other participating municipalities, which will give the Authority $30,000 for startup funds. The REC Authority has been unable to make significant steps without funding. We can't ask for donations because we have no EIN number. We can't get an EIN number without legal assistance. We cannot pay bills or invoice without bond insurance for those who write checks, and that's not possible without paying for bond insurance. The school board and the other two participating municipalities mandated the board the bond insurance in the Articles of Incorporation when they formed the authority. The biggest part of the startup budget, of which you received an advance copy, is for professional consulting. The REC Authority's primary job is to establish the costs associated with building and operating, and operation of an Aquatic Center, and then let the voters decide. Before it can be put to a vote, a significant amount of work will be necessary to lock in costs from everything, from locating to staffing, from the size of the pool to construction costs, and even updating the initial feasibility study, taking into account how things have changed in our community. Eventually, the REC Authority will spend more than what we're asking for tonight. We intend to do fundraising when we get things in place, some of the things I mentioned previously. The Mount Pleasant School Board, the city of Mount Pleasant, and the Charter Township of Union formed the authority, but there was no funding provided to accomplish its tasks. I ask you, Mount Pleasant School Board, to appropriate $10,000 for the Aquatic Recreational Authority. You've been given a copy of the startup budget, which outlines our proposed expenditures, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have, as explained in the formal request letter also given in advance. We will be reporting back to you in the future about our progress and expenditures. On behalf of the REC Authority, I thank you for hearing our request. Any questions?
Is there any questions?
Thank you again.
John, I have a question. What's kind of your timeline that you're envisioning for some of your work as you
We only have three years of life, and we've already used up a chunk of that to get to where we are, but without some funding, we're kind of at a standstill. We'll be starting some, you know, get commitments on where to put it, quotes on how to, you know, how much it'll cost, and so we can lock in some prices, so when we talk to the public, we can say, "Here are some answers that most people look for." We'll be starting with those pretty quickly, but one of the key things for us is that funding, so that we can, in fact, hire the consultants so we can get those answers. We don't have it formalized yet, although that's one of the things that we'll be getting to you to say, "Here's our timetable." We know that because you, this board, and the other two municipalities, they gave us a three-year lifespan, and so it has to be done in that time, and we need to be well ahead of it because it'll need to get on a ballot issue long before the deadline's up. So the clock's ticking, and so far, we don't have any funding, and we can't even get started with the funding unless there's some kind of seed money there. And so that was the purpose of the request.
Thank you, John.
And I'm sorry, we don't have the formalized thing that says, "By this date, this will happen, this date, this will happen." But as we get going and we start making these contacts and memos of understanding with these various commitments for each part of it, we'll be able to get that feedback back to you.
Have the township and the city already approved funding?
You're the first people I've spoken to. We have a meeting coming up with both of those people. We've talked to the city manager and the township manager to get on their agendas. We have not had this opportunity to, like I'm standing here in front of you, I haven't stood in front of them yet.
Those requests are going before the city on October 11 and Union Township on October 13.
Okay.
So I would recommend, if the board does consider this, that we make our donation to the REC Authority contingent on the other two boards also approving the same dollar amount, so that way we continue to be all in at equal amounts.
That was my next question. Thank you.
Thank you again.
So I guess that then is also up to the board. We can either decide to take action on this this evening, or we can wait, and I can add it as a formal action item for our next board meeting.
Ginger, what's the status as far as money being available to do this?
The dollar amount is not an issue right now where we sit with our funding. The dollar amount is not an issue. We just might need to be creative. We're not allowed to make a donation, so we can pay for services or something like that, but legally, we're not allowed to make a donation. So there's definitely ways we can help. We just have to be a little bit more creative.
Thank you.
So you're saying, in other words, we would have to kind of allocate in our budget resources of $10,000 to be spent on the operational upstart of the authority?
Correct. Yes.
Something like that?
Yep.
And perhaps donation wasn't my word that wasn't the best word, but...
I would like to go ahead, because we've had this information, I'd like to go ahead and approve it on the condition that it's contingent upon the other two also approving.
I agree. I'll second moving forward with that also.
Yeah, same here. I think we can move forward. We've had a lot of information, I think, what was it, last summer?
We've had a lot of information on this too before. This is not the first time, and based on the information, I would be comfortable moving forward.
So we could add that as item B under New Business. When we get to that, we'll revisit this. Okay. Thank you, John. Moving on, under Reports and Updates, the month of October is National Principal and National School Administrator Month, and this evening, we want to take a minute to recognize and honor our hard-working administrative leadership team that literally works around the clock, and I know that they do because I hear from them all throughout the day, night, weekends. They are dedicated 24/7 to making our district an amazing place. So we have a small group of them here this evening that everyone was able to join us. When I call your names, if you'll come down, Linda and Ginger are going to help me with the recognition. So we appreciate our administrators. We appreciate all the hard work that they have done. So first, Marcy Stout from Gannyard Elementary, Diane Falsetta from Pullen Elementary, Kim Bishop from Vowles Elementary, Katie Ranky, Fancher Elementary, Erin King, McGuire Elementary, Darby Weaver, Mount Pleasant Middle School, Matt Waldersak, Mount Pleasant Middle School Assistant Principal, Jeff Pladdy, Mount Pleasant High School Associate Principal, John Winkler, Mount Pleasant High School Principal, Kim Funnel, Director of the Way Oasis, the Mount Pleasant Community Education Program, Jim Conway, Athletic Director, Mary K. Volkz, Director of the Greshad Isabella Technical Education Center, Josh Rhodes, Director of Facilities and Transportation, Joe Judge, Chief Information Officer, Stephanie House, Special Education Supervisor, and Kelly Merrihue, Special Education Assistant Supervisor. As Kelly's walking up, I just really want to offer our sincere thanks and appreciation to our administrative team. We know you set the tone every day, and we know you are coming in with a smile on your face every day when we know we're facing challenging times right now. You're working hard, and you're doing it, and you're making a difference for our students and for our staff.
Thank you very much.
And we told them they didn't have to stay, so go home, rest. Next, under Reports and Updates, Ginger and I wanted to take an opportunity just to make sure that the board and our community is familiar and aware of the bond issue that is coming up on the November 2 election, which is really just about a month away now. We are looking at our bond proposal that will allow our district to invest in updates that include security and safety enhancements for our buildings, keeping our focus on the safety and health of our students, of our staff, and our community. It's now more important than ever to make sure that our buildings are in tip-top shape, that they have well-working things like boilers and air handling systems for the safety and security of our students. We are also heavily focused on technology, knowing that the pace and the importance of technology for our students is not slowing down, and it's not changing. So this bond proposal will help provide the latest technology to implement strong career tech programs, programs in science, technology, and engineering, math, and help to continue to prepare our students for a competitive workforce. A very important part of this bond proposal is to know that it's a fiscally responsible proposal and that it allows us to invest in our schools without increasing existing property taxes. And that's really where Ginger can step in and help make sure that everyone is very clear that we are going for a no increase through this bond proposal.
Correct, yeah. We're in a really great situation for the district right now, where after this fiscal year, one of our three existing debts will drop off, and that creates an opportunity for us to generate $45 million to invest in our district and for our students without increasing the current debt levy. So the new debt would come in and replace the old debt, and we would still stay at the same, exact same millage that we've been levying. It's really an amazing opportunity for our district to generate the improvements that we need to continue carrying this district forward without increasing millage amounts for our taxpayers.
So over the next few weeks, you will continue to hear more from our district regarding the bond proposal, but I wanted to make sure that you all had the information that you needed, in case your friends, neighbors, family had any questions, that we can make sure that you were prepared to be able to answer their questions.
I'd just like to highlight that for the public, so all this information we've been presented before, several months ago, that there's a very extended process that we have to go through to get to this point. And thank you, Ginger and Jen, for all that work, and I'm looking forward to having talking points. I am getting asked a lot.
Sure.
About these things, especially since the mail-in ballots have been distributed, and so people are seeing this information, so thank you.
Do any board members have any specific questions that we could answer? If you'll give me just a second, the next item on the report, on Reports and Updates, is our COVID update. So I'll pull up my PowerPoint slides. I just heard that I'm not supposed to say PowerPoint because that ages me, so my slide So looking at our cases as of Friday, October 1st, you will see that we have a significant decrease from when our cases were last reported to you. So these are active student and staff cases as of Friday. You'll note at the bottom, 20 of the students listed here ended isolation today, and two of the staff members listed here ended isolation. Actually, that's a typo that should be today as well. So these numbers are constantly shifting and changing, and we made the commitment to look at them on Fridays so that we could then look at them masking protocols for the following week. So you will see from the last time that we discussed our cases, the numbers at Mount Pleasant Middle School have decreased pretty significantly. And also remember, the last time we were all together, we were a little bit concerned about the numbers at Fancher Elementary, and we've also seen a decrease in those numbers as well.
So, John, just...
Sure.
I want to make sure I understand. So of that total 25, 20 of them ended today. So technically, tomorrow, there will only be five cases.
Well...
Unless something...
Yes, yes, yes. We were made aware of a couple additional cases today, but yes, you are correct that those cases are out of isolation. They actually were able to return to school today. Yep. So that's why this is sort of an always-changing situation, and I know you all understand. So that's why this is sort of an always-changing situation, and I know you all understand that, but it's sometimes a challenge to keep up with it. Looking at our masking protocol, this was sent to our families on Friday. Again, Isabella County is still in high transmission level. These are the levels of community transmission as established by the CDC, and these are the masking protocols that we agreed to as a group, looking at the number of student cases per building, along with the level of community transmission, so we're looking at both areas. This information is posted on our website, and you can see the links here, so you can understand how we're coming upon those numbers. So again, for the week of October 4th, we're at a high transmission, and that means that all students and staff are required to wear masks inside at all times. I wanted to provide some general district updates for you as well. As of today, we do not have any classes or any programs that are all virtual due to COVID. You know, since school started, we've had a couple of classes that we've made the decision with the Health Department's consultation that we needed to move to an all-virtual setting, and we do not have any classroom in that situation as of today. Our staff members have begun to get the COVID-19 booster. Several staff members received the booster last week, and they'll continue through the next couple of weeks. They are also getting, they're also getting the flu shot while they're getting the booster, if they choose to do that. So the Health Department is not holding large clinics for our staff, but there are lots of opportunities where they are able to do that. We are looking at offering opportunities, I'm sorry, this keeps going in and out here. We are looking at offering opportunities where we may be able to offer testing, rapid testing, for our staff who need it. We are still running into issues with availability of tests. So what happens is that we may have a staff member that, for whatever reason, suspects that they may have been exposed to COVID and would like to test. Our protocol is that if they feel as though they need to get a test, they need to wait until they have the results of that test to return to work. So what often happens is that staff members are waiting two or three days to get a negative test result back, when they could have been working the whole time. We do have a number of rapid tests from our spring testing that we did with athletics. We have a training protocol from MDHHS, and we are going to start offering limited tests for staff in those situations, really just to give them the reassurance that they can keep going, and it will also help us with our sub-issue, because we are incredibly short of sub-coverage right now. So that's something that we're trying on a limited basis right now, but I think if it proves to be successful, we will continue to offer that for our staff. The biggest thing, I think, that we need to continue to work on is really focus on that partnership between the district and our families, and that's something that we've reiterated, that we need our families to screen their children daily, their children aren't feeling well, we need them to keep them home, we need them to contact us and let us know if their kids have symptoms, so that we're not finding out two and three days later that things are going on, and they didn't know who to call or what to do. So we'll be reminding our families of that, sharing the refrigerator reminders again with them, so they clearly know what the symptoms are and what they need to do if they have any questions. Excuse me. And that's all I have for an update this evening. I don't know if you all have questions for me?
I just have one question. Can you give us a sense of the amount of students that are quarantining right now? Is it a large amount, or that's one thing we haven't discussed too much?
Right, because it is very different for quarantining this year, and especially because we are masking. So in all cases, if we have both sets of students that are masked, that is a waiver for quarantine, according to the Central Michigan District Health Department. So we are quarantining any siblings of positive cases with the, sort of, the expectation that it's very challenging to separate students at home, but I don't have a number for you of just general students that are quarantined, because there are so many different exceptions. The mask is an exception, a vaccine is an exception, we just find that many of our students fall into that exception, so we don't have those big groups that are quarantining any longer.
That makes sense, thank you.
And that's all I have for my Reports and Updates this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is consent items. First off is the approval of minutes for September 20th, 2021's regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, that passes. Next is new business, starting with a new hire.
Good evening. We are really excited to welcome Doug Wright to our crew as one of the Project Aware counselors. Doug has a great resume. He had some really unique experiences working with students in inner-city Chicago. Our interview team really enjoyed speaking with him, and we threw the net very wide to reach out to references. His home base is Midland now, and he has just accepted the position, and we're excited to hopefully place him at McGuire Elementary. So welcome to Doug.
Wonderful. Is there a motion to accept Doug Wright as a new hire?
So moved.
I think you guys both did, one of you want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, perfect. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes, welcome Doug to our community. Next is the swim, the approval to give the $10,000 to the REC Center so that they can continue making headway in that space. Is there a motion, or, yes, I'm sorry?
With the condition?
The condition of that that is accepted. For the other two authorities, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes, so we will move ahead with that as soon as we know the outcomes of the other two authorities. Okay, next is the Board of Education discussion. This is an opportunity to discuss anything that we have pressing amongst the board members. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add at this time?
Just note that it is a homecoming week this week, everyone, and go Oilers, and so there's lots of activities going on. We're getting back more to normal with our activities, so I look forward to a good, exciting week.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that, Tim, and I'll just remind everyone that our parade is returning to downtown Mount Pleasant this year. It starts at 4:30 on Friday afternoon, and our football game starts at 7 o'clock on Friday, and our team is currently undefeated, and I think ranked third in the state, maybe? Second, third? Looks like John's holding up three fingers. I need my glasses on, but so our football team is doing quite well this year, so it'll be an exciting game Friday night at 7 o'clock.
Wonderful. Anything else?
I'd like to mention to our administrators, thank you for being the frontline. I mean, you guys absorb a lot, and you do a lot of culture, you create community within your buildings, and you create the community that we all live in. Thank you for all of the work that you've done. I know it's been very, very hard on you. We do appreciate that, and we do recognize that, but we seriously appreciate everything that you've done for our district over the past couple of years especially.
Yes, thank you very much. Anything else? Not seeing any, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.